1:00 PM on Wednesday, September 6th, 2023. This is Brian Layton and Vice Chair of the School Committee. I am calling the meeting to order. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. This meeting will be broadcast live through the Local Access Cable Channel and on the Public Access Facebook page and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube Channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may be in fact be discussed and all other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by open meeting law. The first item on the agenda is Executive Session to Conduct Strategies in Preparation for Negotiations with Non-Union Personnel or to Conduct Collective Bargaining Sessions or Contract Negotiations with Non-Union Personnel. Do I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
I make a motion to go into Executive Session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We'll see you after the Executive Session. Thank you.
Thank you, Tatum, and welcome.
Next item on the agenda is Public Comment. If you're online, if you could just raise your hand or take off your video. Do we see any hands up?
I do not.
Any public comment from the committee? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is Review and Approve Minutes. I didn't see any minutes.
We have none this evening.
Next item on the agenda is Review and Approve Line Item Transfers. Do we have any line item transfers?
We have none this evening.
Moving on, the next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another school year. An update for you all on transportation. In the first week of school, as well as on the first day for kindergarten, we had no bus returns, which that is quite an accomplishment. Oftentimes, it takes families a little bit of time to coordinate schedules and so on, but no bus returns. As of August 29th, we have placed 1,521 students on a bus. We have 41 students that submitted a form, but they indicated no transportation need. And currently, we have seven waiting placement. We had communication on August 11th out to individual families confirming their child's bus number. On August 17th, it was included in my welcome back message to families. And on the 18th, bus routes were posted on the district website and in the Lunenburg ledger. On the 28th of August, we sent an additional communication to families with some important bus-related reminders, including that there is a video tutorial for how to read the bus route schedule, information on bus returns, group bus stops, bus passes, any bus scheduling changes, fifth grade consent forms, and a general safety reminder about flashing bus lights. I want to make you aware of a new program that will be piloted potentially at the high school this year. An Artist in Residence Program was proposed by the Lunenburg Cultural Council. They asked the Select Board to support an Artist in Residence Program at the high school. The Select Board, as I understand it, approved ARPA monies for this project at last evening's Select Board meeting. Dr. Chandler from the Cultural Council met with both Ms. DeSantrey and me to discuss the possibility here. She will be working with Ms. DeSantrey to coordinate some meetings with the high school art teachers to discuss what this would look like in practice in our school this year. As soon as I have more details about it, I'll provide the committee with a report. An update on the search for a Director of Facilities and Grounds. Mr. Pousatary left the district this summer. We began a process to fill this position immediately. We posted the position. We had 31 applicants. Pre-screening phone interviews were conducted and six applicants were then invited to interview in Round One. The first round interviews concluded last week. We are looking to move three finalists forward to the second round of interviews, which will also include tours of the facility. We're hoping to get those all scheduled within the next week or two, pending coordination of everyone's schedule. It's our sincere hope to have somebody onboard as soon as possible, and we hope that we will be able to appoint someone before the end of the month of September. A few reminders for the month of September. Tomorrow, September 7th, is open house at the high school. Next Tuesday, September 12th, open house at the middle school. Wednesday next week, September 13th, is the open house for the primary school. Thursday, September 14th, is the open house for Turkey Hill Elementary School. And a reminder that the next meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee will be on September 20th at 6:30 PM over at the middle high school in the middle school collaboration room, and this will be a hybrid meeting. I will say that we do have some rather warm weather this week. We sent out a reminder a little earlier this evening, asking parents to dress their students in lighter weight clothes and to send a water bottle in if they don't typically bring a water bottle in. That said, we do have added bottled water available for any students that do not have a refillable bottle. We've been monitoring temperatures in classrooms. I spent time today in classrooms at the Turkey Hill and the primary. Classroom temperatures still remain cooler than the outdoor temperatures, but we are also trying to limit, you know, a lot of physical activity for the kids. As an example, Turkey Hill had indoor recess today. We have also had some challenges with the climate control system at the middle high school. We've been troubleshooting that and actually had three different contractors in to consult with each other to troubleshoot what was happening. They identified the problem and ordered parts, and the repairs have largely been completed. A small additional portion of the repair will take place tomorrow. Once we have the system fully functioning again, and as I understand it, the auditorium at the high school is pretty cool at the moment, if need be, students from the second-floor classrooms of Turkey Hill, as we have done in the past, can walk up to the middle school and spend the afternoon with their class in a more climate-controlled setting because Turkey Hill is truly the warmest building that we have currently. So please be aware that we are monitoring the situation. I get National Weather Service reports and updates for all kinds of weather events, including heat-related weather events. So we're keeping an eye on all of that to ensure that students and staff are safe in the heat. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you. Does anyone on the committee have any questions?
I had a question.
Laura?
It's not about the weather one. The seven students, you said there were seven students awaiting transportation assignments. Do you anticipate they'll be placed?
Yes.
Okay.
Because by policy, we will place them. It's just a matter of verifying an available seat on which route. But yes, they will be placed.
For what it's worth, I think while we had some very long and difficult conversations last year about busing, I think that they're paying off. And that work, together with the work of your staff and the busing company to figure this out in advance.
Yep.
We're reaping the benefits from now.
Absolutely.
I also wanted to say, I thought it was creative, the Turkey Hill utilizing the middle high school and how close they are and the campus, school campus.
Yep, because they can stay on campus and walk from that building up to the middle high school.
Yep.
There have been a few occasions over the last handful of years while I've been here, either this time of year or in June, where we'll have a stretch of, you know, consecutive warm days. So we're doing all the same things that we've done every other time we've had a stretch of really warm weather to make sure that, you know, we're watching out for staff and students. In both of the buildings, Turkey Hill and the primary school, there are some designated spaces with air conditioning. So if staff or students are starting to feel the fatigue from the heat, they can avail themselves of some time in that space, rehydrate, and when they feel that they're kind of rebounded, they can return to their regular schedule.
Okay. Thank you for managing that.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is New Business. First is Back to School Updates.
So you have an update that was provided by the principals. It just introduces all of the new staff and the positions in each of the schools. Any transfers of previous employees to a new building are also noted. Class size by grade is also included in this back-to-school report. By all accounts, everything went very well opening day, and that includes opening day for kindergarten this week.
Seeing none, next item on the agenda is the Special Education Program Evaluation Report.
We conducted an evaluation report of our special ed programming last spring. You have a copy of the report. Again, if you have any specific questions for any of the information that you see here in the report, you can send them to me, and I will, if I can't answer them directly myself, I'll consult with Juliana Hanscom, Special Ed Director, to get you the information that you're looking for.
A question I had was, where can the public find the report, as well as the previous one we just mentioned?
Yep. So all of the documents for any of our school committee meetings, the public can go to the Lunenburg Public Schools District website. Across the middle of the page, there are some links. You can click on the School Committee link, which will take you then to a new page, and there you'll find several other links. If you go to the link for meetings and agendas, that will take you then to a page where documents for each meeting date are posted. So again, this report is posted there. The public can access that, and they can also reach out if they have questions.
Thank you. Does any other committee member have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is the FY25 Budget Timeline.
So every year at this time, we bring forward a proposed timeline. This is fairly consistent with the timeline that we have used in recent years. The budget development will begin, honestly, in a month's time. Directors and principals will be asked to submit their budget requests. All of their budgets are due in before the Thanksgiving break. They're due in November 20th. And between November 27th and December 6th, Mr. Cassidy and I will meet with the principals and the directors of the different departments to review their requests. We will continue to have ongoing dialogue with all of those folks throughout the budget cycle, as we have in prior years. We're proposing the presentation of the identified needs, that's that five-year staffing plan, on January 3rd. January 17th would be the first presentation of a proposed FY25 budget to the school committee. We would internally conduct presentations for staff at each of the schools during the months of January and February. March 20th is the proposed final budget presentation, where we also have the public hearing. And then we take the school committee-approved budget forward to the Finance Committee. That date is yet to be determined, but typically it's either the same week that the school committee approves the budget or the following week. And then, of course, the budget is part of the omnibus budget for the town, which is presented at annual town meeting this year, May 4th.
Does any committee member have any questions about the FY25 budget development and timelines?
My only comment would be that I, and I say this every year, it's very important that we hold our hearing and vote to approve a budget prior to bringing this to the Finance Committee. And there, typically what happens is that we bring it a week before their public hearing, and then they make their recommendations at the public hearing, and it goes into the warrant. I was just scanning the calendar, and I just lost the month of March. I think if past precedents were to fall forward, their public hearing would likely be on the 28th, which means we could probably present on the 21st. So I would encourage you to work that out with the town manager and the Chair of the Finance Committee as soon as possible, because if we need to go earlier, we should plan accordingly.
Okay.
Yeah, potentially even have a special meeting if we need to devote. That is the challenge. It always is close. Every year, I always remember, it's very close.
Usually we thread the needle, but I think it's going to work, just looking at the way the dates fall. It should work based on what, how the calendar and the warrant have worked in the past.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Next item on the agenda, the FY25 Draft Capital Plan.
So this is really and truly a very early, rough draft with only minor changes made from the 10-year draft plan presented a year ago. We still have a lot of unknowns in terms of prices, and still some questions relative to our approach to the Turkey Hill building in particular. There's been discussion of this committee relative to, do we move forward carefully? Do we try not to trip an ADA compliance threshold? Do we explore addressing all the ADA compliance issues first and then not having those limitations on other decisions for other plans? But when last we spoke about this, we discussed the need for some engineering assessment of the Turkey Hill in terms of what would be involved to make it ADA compliant. So I think the funding for some assessment of that facility relative to ADA will be necessary.
Is there any questions or comments from the committee?
Yeah, so two, I have a few questions, actually. A comment relative to the Turkey Hill ADA engineering topic. I had thrown around a few different ideas at last week's meeting on this topic, one of which was to potentially put forth a warrant article at special town meeting to deal with this. I've since been persuaded that that's probably not the best course of action, and that there are two other better slash more palatable courses of action, one of which is pursuing the capital planning process, which is outlined here, and the other is working with the Municipal Building Committee over the course of the next couple of months to potentially see if we could partner on this. Last night, the Select Board appropriated, I believe, $225,000 for municipal building engineering. And in a conversation that I had with the Chair earlier today, we discussed the possibility of facilitating a joint meeting or members of our committee appearing at their meeting sometime in October, and potentially looking at how we might be able to maximize the benefit of some of those funds and could potentially include Turkey Hill, because the reality is, as I outlined last week, to sell a plan, we really need to sell a comprehensive vision, in my opinion, that includes Turkey Hill. So that gives us the opportunity to pursue two paths in parallel, and if one works, that's great. If the other, then we have a backup plan to deal with that. And the timing of the capital planning approach is not ideal, but it still gives us a path to addressing that issue. One area of concern that I do have, and I know that this really is, will probably come down to just how it's presented to the Capital Planning Committee, is right now we've got an HVAC, a sprinkler system, plumbing systems, all in FY31. And I understand that that represents specific lines that appeared in the work that Mr. Pousatary did last year, and I assume it's been updated to reflect those numbers. But I think that we need to be able to engage in a conversation that says, these are very unlikely to be all landing in the FY31 capital plan, that this needs to be part of this
Bigger conversation.
Bigger conversation, this larger plan. So anyway, I support what we're doing here, but I think that there's a lot to be developed over the course of the next several months, together with the Municipal Building Committee, the Capital Planning Committee, and perhaps even the Select Board on this topic. Question on vehicles. I assume the $68,000 for dump truck with plow is the truck that we requested last year that was not funded? Is that?
So last year, we requested a pickup truck with plow and
And a sander, right.
We are still awaiting delivery of the truck, the pickup truck, that was funded in the capital plan for FY23. Knowing that we weren't going to receive that truck in time for the winter season last school year, we did go ahead and purchase a small sanding unit that we could put on to one of the trucks that we did have. So we're taking the sanding unit off. But what we put forward last year was a very, very, very rusted-out dump truck. So with some conversation, we decided that we would request a dump truck with a plow.
Okay.
Because the pickups just have a limited cargo load. We wouldn't have a larger truck.
Right. So my recollection, and I could be wrong on this, but my recollection of that discussion you asked last year about the pickup truck with plow and sander, thank you for correcting me, there was some concern about the sander specified for that truck and the ability for that truck to handle the sanding and that sort of thing, I recall that. But there was an articulated need that we would need that sander, because the sander that we do have is, it's basically plastic and relatively small, is my understanding. I guess what I'm getting to here is, do we need a sander here? And should we be grossing that up a bit to deal with sanding?
We could have a conversation further about it. I think for our sanding needs, I think that the unit that we purchased got the job done. We're not talking about the school department having to navigate all sanding of all school property, independent of the DPW. So during, you know, a weather event, when DPW is out on the roadways, they will come through and they will drop salt. Our challenge is during the winter months, particularly later in the winter, when the weather gets warmer during the day and snow melts, and then the temperatures drop in the evening, and then it refreezes as a sheet of ice. There have been times that my principals have arrived to the building early in the morning, and I'm getting a phone call at 6:00 AM asking to please reach out to the DPW so that they could send the sanding truck, the salt truck, down to take a swing through, let's say, the entire primary school driveway, through the parking lots, and back out, because the property is a sheet of ice. If we have our own unit, our own maintenance crew can take care of that. And then I'm not putting a call in at 6:00 AM to the DPW to, please arrive before the parent drop-off line starts to form in the driveway. We have the same type of events or occasions in the evenings, particularly this happens at the middle high school, where there'll be a basketball game. And as the game is over and people are exiting, I have gotten a phone call from the principal before saying, could you please call the DPW and have them send somebody over to sand the parking lot, because it's really slippery. Clearly, by the time I can get somebody from the DPW over there, the parking lot is going to have emptied out. So having our own small unit helps us address those circumstances. We certainly could have a larger conversation about just
Yeah.
Further independence from
I don't want to belabor everybody's time on this. I want to take a closer look at just vehicles in general here. The other thing that I'm privy to is that the town manager provided the Capital Planning Committee last week an inventory of all the vehicles in the town. And currently, what she's tracking for the schools is, amongst other things, like gators and tractors, a 2006 Ford F-350, a 2008 Ford F-350, a 2012 Ford F-250. Those are, I mean, according to her inventory, we don't have a truck that's less than 11 years old right now. We've got one on order, I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
We're asking for one this year, and we'll be asking for another one in three years, and then a passenger van a year following. I just, I'm worried about the age of our vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
And as the town has experienced with heavier equipment over the course of the last year, they tend to break at bad times.
They always do.
And I'd rather us not have to experience that. We should not be driving these vehicles completely into the ground. We should be driving them mostly into the ground, and the trick is to figure out when mostly is.
I would agree.
Was there anything else yet, Peter?
That's it.
Thank you. Laura?
So that $225,000 in ARPA funds, does that include money for Turkey Hill Elementary?
Not specifically. So, and that's why I think it's appropriate to have the money here on the capital planning request. But what's been described to me is the potential for some cost savings with the Municipal Building Committee Engineering. They have two members, for example, who are engineers, who are donating their time and expertise, and the realization that we need to get our handle around a Turkey Hill plan in order to have a comprehensive plan. There may be an opportunity to partner on a comprehensive plan that includes some of that funding. So again, TBD in terms of how that shakes out, but the 225 that's been appropriated has been appropriated to the Municipal Building Committee, not the school committee at this point.
I think what you're saying is, we could ask the Building Design Committee to include the Turkey Hill engineering in that.
Specifically Specifically for our immediate need, which is to figure out the ADA problem, not necessarily engineering a new building.
Exactly. A smaller portion of engineering to add on top of their already list that they have to do.
Right.
Laura?
Do they seem amenable to that?
Well, I only spoke with the chair.
Okay.
So I
I think it's early on in the process.
There's a member here.
Oh, okay.
They have a meeting in a couple of weeks, and we'll perhaps meet with them in October. So again, I think that this is something that's going to shake out over
The possibilities.
Government moves very slow. All right, nope. I was happy to see the window safety film at Turkey Hill Elementary School on the list. And also the entryway driveway expansion reconstruction at the primary school.
It's an issue that's been raised even by the public safety departments. When we have events and, or even soccer, if people are parked on both sides of the driveway into the primary, it creates a very, very, very narrow lane for traffic flow, and some larger vehicles would have trouble navigating. So we just want to keep this on the radar. We do, when we receive information about grants available for, through the school safety, through DOT, or any number of opportunities, we do take a look to see if we could potentially apply for a grant for that project. Most of the time when we take a look closely at the limitations of the grant, it's not a good fit. So we'll keep our eyes open. We'll keep our eyes open for potential funding sources for anything on this list, quite frankly.
Yeah, that's just, that's been a real problem with the primary school. So I'm really happy to see that on there, because that would be a good thing to look into.
Laura, did you have anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Tony?
Nope.
I had a couple of things. I would definitely be interested in the new facilities director, when we get a new facilities director, their opinion on a lot of this. Also, I think even giving them the tour, showing them the vehicles, even getting their opinions on that, I think that would be interesting, too. For the vehicles, I think I agree with Peter, like, trying not to run them to the ground, but even looking into the auctioning vehicles, when they still are able to get something for those vehicles, looking into that. And also for the Turkey Hill, it looked like the FY31 kind of clumped together because of the concerns of a long-term project where the building would have to be vacant, and it wouldn't be just done during the summer, if that's correct. And everything else is kind of outside before that, because we can do that before that issue arrives. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I think that that's the general thinking at this time. Again, we can continue to have conversation about what's the most prudent approach to remedying that building. But I think we're on a good path with, you know, an assessment, an engineering assessment relative to the ADA, and what's that going to look like? And will it trip into any of these other system repairs sheerly because they're moving walls? We just don't, we just don't know. But I think maybe after we get some information, if it's feasible to break them up and spread them out, we could take a look at that. But again, you know, figures on this document are also assuming MSBA reimbursement. So this would just be the town's ultimate final, you know, portion of the project. And as we know, the MSBA is not doing any energy-conscious related upgrades, like windows, boilers. They have an accelerated program for those kinds of things. But they have suspended that program so that they can put all of their available funding into school building projects, because the costs of construction had escalated so much that there were people, districts, communities, that had moved forward with a project. And with escalating construction costs, found themselves in a situation where they didn't think they could complete the build. So MSBA suspended the other program so that they could provide greater assistance to those projects.
Remind me again what the time horizon is for an MSBA project? Like, if MSBA were to do a rehab project with us in FY31, we're committed to that building for how much longer as a school?
We have to keep it open as a school for 10 more years.
And it has to be a school, not a school office.
That's correct.
Yep. So
Because MSBA really doesn't even reimburse, you know, if a district wanted to, in a new school build, include office space and move central office into this brand-new school, they don't, they don't consider that, that space reimbursable.
I think that we're going to have to have a conversation about how this is portrayed in the capital plan. And I understand that maybe nobody looks past the first column. But, and this is probably more appropriate for a committee report later on, the Capital Planning Committee this year is going to look past the first column and spend time in the spring actually trying to validate at either a five or a 10-year level. And we agreed to that at our last meeting. So these numbers become very important
Mm-hmm.
in terms of how we portray them. An FY31 project means that we have an FY41 building.
Correct.
And so when we talk about 10 to 15 years more from Turkey Hill, or nine to 14, since we started this conversation a year ago, we're now talking about an 18-year building.
Yeah. And the reason that it was put in 31 was because we were provided information from the town manager's office that, looking at excludable debt, when would it timeout that the town would be able to financially support a new school building project? And we were told FY31, which is why the chunk of that money is sitting out there in FY31.
Okay. Again, I think this needs more discussion, because while you're right, and I understand the philosophy behind it, the capital plan is traditionally funded by the omnibus or by the budget process, not by excludable debt. So we should be thinking of this as a pay-as-you-go plan, not necessarily a borrow-and-go plan. And recognizing the fact that we are not going to be able to pay and go nearly $10 million, but, or $8 million, but we've got a, I think we need to think through that a little bit before we approve this.
And, you know, I think potentially thinking may change, depending on what happens, what's the outcome with the Building Design Committee proposals.
Tony?
Would it make sense to create a subcommittee of the School Committee just to deal with this? It seems like we spend a lot of time on this, but because the updates are coming in so slowly, I feel like oftentimes, we're just saying the same thing again. And so if we have people that just focus on this issue, maybe they could, you know, keep us surprised when things change, as opposed to, you know, rehashing. I mean, I can't tell you how many times we've seen this spreadsheet about, you know, when these things are coming and what they're for, but like, if we don't have any information about where we are in the queue, like Carol needs to say, then I feel like talking about this in the School Committee over and over again, I mean, we're not doing anything.
No, I don't think, I don't think there's any action at this time, unless people thought that something should be moved or adjusted.
I think what we're most curious about, Mr. Cassidy and I, what is the thinking of the committee relative to what we've prioritized for next fiscal year's capital requests? Do you all agree that these are priorities that we want to pursue for next year's request?
Yeah. I guess big picture is, we are going to approve a capital plan. This is the proposed capital plan.
Is, no, I mean, upgrade fire alarm system for the primary school doesn't have a year on there, but it has a category? Is that just
So we, we did some repairs to that system two and a half years ago. And those replacement parts and repairs seem to have resolved much of the troubleshooting problems that we were encountering on a regular basis. So right now, everything is functioning.
Security upgrades for the primary school as well doesn't have a year? Or an amount?
So I think that that's referencing the projects that were proposed and funded for the current fiscal year.
These are false. They represent a column that we're in now.
Right, it's fallen off.
Yes, okay.
Which is the same for the Turkey Hill stuff, by the way.
Okay. And no, I'm
All right. So this is just a discussion item, if there's no other discussion, we can
I just want to make a comment. Tony, I respectfully disagree with you on this topic. This is our job. The town by charter does a capital plan every year. Every department submits capital plan items to the Capital Planning Committee, and it goes through a process, which I'm not super comfortable with the process, but it is prescribed by the charter. And this is part of the job. And the charter prescribes, in one place, a five-year capital plan, and in the bylaws is another reference, which I believe refers to a 10-year, not with the same level of specificity. So I think we can take guidance from here, and as an executive board, we actually have more oversight in terms of the, how we manage our facilities and how we strategize our facilities than the Select Board does for the remainder of the town. And so, you know, I think that by statute and by charter and by bylaw, this is something that, as a committee, we have to deal with. And I understand the fact that the wheels grind very slowly, and it seems like we're getting a lot of repetitive information, but things are actually changing.
I think part of it, too, is that we've been talking about Turkey Hill for a while, so a lot of this stuff is very fresh.
I understand that. But if we're not talking about this, then the perception is, is that nothing is happening. And I think that it's incumbent upon us to, number one, make sure that we're aligned on this, or that we're executing the opinion of the majority, but also to keep the public informed of what is a very important topic.
I don't
Yes, Tony.
I don't have any issue dealing with the capital planning. My comment was more about the way in which we talk about it. Nothing has changed since last week, and we spent time on this, and we have resolved nothing. And we do this all the time when it comes to this exact chart. And the thing that I think that we've got to recognize is, like, number one, everybody here is a volunteer. Number two, we can keep people informed, but talking about the same thing two weeks in a row is not keeping people informed. Like, we know what we, I mean, I think we're all in agreement, maybe I'm wrong, but that we need to do this engineering study and the safety film, which is why it's on the next, you know, the first column. But like, nothing's changed since last week. So that was really my objection. I understand what we have to do, and I agree that we should do it, but like, if our words aren't making things clear or solving problems, then I think we should just keep going.
Yeah, we can keep going on the agenda. I did take point of Peter mentioning the FY31, because it is, a lot of those items will likely not get approved by a capital plan, and maybe that is, you know, debt for the town. So I'd question whether we should put it on the capital plan, but I do appreciate it being there, because also it gives us that timeline of where we're expecting action. So I could see where it's not needed on the capital plan, but again, we need to have that as part of our long-term planning, that we will need those funds.
I think, yeah, I think it should be enumerated on the capital plan, because then the public knows the costs. And that's only half the cost, because we're assuming the MSBA, so that $12 million
Probably footnote those.
That $12 million, it's got a little
And that would be today dollars, not FY31 dollars.
It's got a little MSBA assistance. So that $12 million that we're proposing for the capital plan, it's actually a $24, $25 million renovation for Turkey Hill in 31, which means we're now committing to another 10 years of that school whenever construction is completed. No, I think it's important to enumerate the numbers so that the public knows we're talking about a $25 million renovation. Even if we are not sure what's going to happen in 31, I think it should be on the budget. I think people should know that this cost is coming. So I definitely, and I think putting it in 31 is a good move.
Thank you. All right. We do have additional items on the agenda for tonight, so I'm going to move down. We can, again, add that to a future agenda as well if we need to, and we'll eventually approve the capital plan. The next item on the agenda is action item, the primary AC project warrant article. We have that in our folders? I can read it. "September 6, 2023, the school department requests consideration of the following as a warrant article for the special town meeting on November 15, 2022." So I think we need to
Nope.
Yeah.
Fix that. "To see if the town will vote to transfer $232,800 from the FY23 capital plan, approved at the May 7, 2022 annual town meeting, to the Lunenburg School District for the purpose of installing ductless split climate control systems at the Lunenburg Primary School, or take any action thereto."
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
So this is informed by a couple of conversations that I had with the town manager following our meeting last week. And we looked at a couple of different options here to include reclassifying the item, or basically amending the FY23 capital plan, or requesting a transfer from that capital plan to the school department to do it as described. And she conferred with town council and advised me that, in her view, this is the cleanest way to do it. And so that's why it was written to that approach. Not being a municipal law attorney, I took guidance from previous warrants to write this, but the process will be such that if we approve this, it will go to the Select Board for inclusion on the warrant. The warrant closes on the 18th, and I would imagine they will meet on it at their next subsequent meeting. And then it will go to town council for review and suggested changes before it actually hits the warrant. So what we would ultimately be approving is not necessarily final language, but a communication of intent that would then get reviewed and revised by town council, assuming the Select Board approves including it on the warrant.
Thank you for your work on this. Tony?
First of all, I like the language. Second Um, first of all, I like the language. Second, are you, are you going to be able to, or one of us is going to be able to explain to the people when we present it that this is not new money?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we will game plan this in the appropriate timeline. Yeah, yeah, I think somebody needs to do it and, uh, I will certainly be there and will be ready, willing and able to, uh, to argue.
I'll make sure I'll be there too.
I think as a committee, yeah, we can decide who will stand up and speak.
Well, you may need me for rebuttal purposes.
Any other additional questions or comments? So this is an action item.
I'll make a motion to approve the language as written, understanding that it's going to be edited by others.
And with the correction on the date?
Yes.
Actually, that date references the original town meeting where this plan was.
Got it.
Oh, no, the one at the top, the.
Yeah, yeah, it's the first paragraph.
Very top, November.
For the special town meeting on November 15th.
Is that for this year, November 15th meeting?
Yep.
Is the fact it's, oh, sorry, motion, don't care.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right, so the motion is approved. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome.
Uh, next item on the agenda is discussion FY 24 school committee goals. So I will open it up to the committee if anybody wants to add any additional comments from last meeting.
Um, in, oh, can I go?
Yes, Laura.
In regards to what you were just talking about, Tony, um, I would like to put out there that maybe we consider as a goal coming up with a district specific plan for the buildings outside of the municipal building. And we say definitively, this is what we would like. I think that might help move things an inch. Um, I know that things move slow, but right now we haven't actually enumerated a plan or what we would like to happen out loud. Because we, we don't know the future, but we do know the ages of our buildings. We know that there are changes in education. We know that Turkey Hill is a middle school housing elementary school students built for a time period that doesn't exist anymore from a safety and security standpoint. So I thought we might want to consider that as a goal.
Yeah, I think when we hear from the building design committee, members on that committee also are interested in whether the school committee is going to want to do a new build or revamp the, the current building. I had that also on my list of, uh, potential. Just really overall facilities, capital planning. I wonder to, again, getting the opinion of the, a newer facility director too, where our facilities are. My only concern with that is are we going to get a lot done this year or is it the sheer goal or is it maybe even the year after? That's my only concern where I think in spring town meeting, we'll have a good idea of where the building, municipal building design is going to be, but I'm not opposed as well.
I think we can come up with opinions on what we think should happen too.
Do the work.
Sooner than spring even. And if those opinions don't happen, that's, or as a board, what we would like to see happen doesn't happen in town, that's okay too. I know that the direction we'd like to take things is not always the direction the town takes things.
So it's my recollection that when we went through this series of discussions in the spring, I know this is driving you crazy.
I'm so sorry.
That.
I'll, I'll limit them.
We, we, uh, we did sort of resolve that it's our intent to keep the building functioning for 10 to 15 years. And that, you know, we went through the process at the suggestion of the, the building committee and select board chair to determine what we think the long-term vision of that building is. And I think we all sort of agreed that long-term, after its useful life as a school, it could be converted into a community building. I, I think that the challenge that we are at right now is, is how do we, how do we get there, right? What, what are the, what are the pieces, parts and the steps to actually get to that vision and ma, and bring it closer to reality? So I'm not sure that I want, that it's worth rehashing sort of the long-term vision of the building. In, in my mind, it's how do you get to a point where?
Oh, I don't mean specifically the building.
With other committees and the town.
I don't mean specifically the buildings, I mean buildings.
Oh, buildings. I'm sorry, I miss, I misunderstood.
Yeah, I meant, you know, a five-year plan, a 10-year plan.
Okay.
Because we know the ages of our building. I mean, if, say, if, what our plan would be, if we want to build a new school and at a certain time, say, we'd like to do that, or if we're going to commit to renovation, or we'd like to explore that option. I, I think we should take a, we've been very wishy-washy and I know that it's because we're waiting a lot for the municipal building committee and, uh, the building reuse as far as passios goes and a lot of engineering studies. I think we need to pick a direction and start pursuing it and with the knowledge that it might not happen.
Thank you. Any other additional goal discussions?
Yeah, I'll let someone else go first though.
I articulated mine last week, so I'm, I'm good.
Um, community engagement. Uh, I know that the, what was it? The DUCI study started down that one. Um, I think engaged parents make for a better school system. I think we lost a lot from COVID. We talked about that last week. Um, but that might be a great goal. Differentiated education. The mission, so I went and looked on our website, the mission of Lunenburg Public Schools is to provide all students with the skills, confidence and passion for lifelong learning. It says all. Um, so I really think we've been focusing on a lot of learning loss from COVID and it might be time to start branching out a little and maintaining a lifelong love of learning in all students.
Mm-hmm. So you'll see that in the strategy action plans later.
District communication. I know our last year's goal was communication. It seemed focused on our communication, communications as a committee with the public. Dr. Burnham knows, um, I've been for years talking about district communication. Um, I know I get a lot of complaints from other parents about how our district communicates with parents as far as emails and how they're sent out. Emergency text alerts being clearly labeled from Lunenburg Public.
So there are some technical platform limitations. So that's not something that I have full autonomy over. Um, I, I hear what you're saying. But, but I don't, I don't have full control over the limitations of the different platforms that, that we are using. We're always looking for new ones, so if I can find one that provides us better autonomy, then that would be very good. However, the text messaging feature that we added, we added that feature from an existing communication platform that handles our automated calls, our email blasts that go out. And there are limitations on, on how that text looks.
Okay.
So I would just interject just for a moment. Um, so I love the idea. But I would say that would fit more under the superintendent's goals. Like if, so we decide what the superintendent's goals are and we approve the superintendent's goals, but a communication within the district would be more of a superintendent's goal. And then the communication goal that we had prior was a school committee goal because it was school committee communication. So it's a little, yeah, just a different avenue.
And I would just ask that if parents come to any of you with complaints about anything, please refer them to me. Because then I can address their concerns directly or hear their feedback directly and address what I can based on what I hear. If parents don't come forward and they don't provide that feedback through any of our surveys to solicit their feedback, I can't address what I don't know.
Anything else? Laura?
And then just the community engagement. Trying to engage the community more in the school committee and school activities.
Thank you. Tony?
I, the only goals are the ones I, I brought up last week. I don't think I have anything to add.
Okay. I would just want to add, I think combining all of your ideas would be great. Uh, I love the idea of integrating subcommittees that Tony had mentioned in the goals, where once we set our goals, I think we could set up a subcommittee that can work on, say, the community engagement, um, and communications where it's, whether it's the, you know, the Facebook, um, posts and stuff like that, social media engagement. Maybe it's, uh, the subcommittees are working on like a survey that we could do. Or even having a forum, planning a forum that we can get community engagement and community, uh, feedback. The other goals that I, I had highlighted, um, Laura had already mentioned facilities. Again, I'm still up in the air on that one. I'm not sure, but I do love the idea of facilities because again, of Turkey Hill and the concerns there, uh, and capital planning. And then the other one was kind of connected was just a, a goal of increasing funding allocation for educational programs. And maybe into that too, expanding on that with just expanding community partnerships for resource sharing, any way to, to try to get additional funding or resources. And on that end, going further advocating for, you know, state, uh, additional funding as well. Being more proactive as a committee, reaching out to our legislators and trying to get additional funding that way.
So I, I'm just thinking aloud a little bit about communication and engagement. I think that they're kind of closely coupled. The superintendent has a two-year goal that involves engagement. That we did a lot of work on constructing here a year ago and there has been progress made and we should continue to talk about that. One of the thoughts that I, and, and I have, I, I think is my bias has certainly shifted, as I mentioned last week, relative to communication, like where I was very critical, I have kind of taken a different view, I think. Perhaps because I'm more involved than I was previously and have a different point of view on this. But I think that overall communications have improved. And I've also heard feedback from parents like, it's just too much, we're hearing too much. Well, the problem is, is it can't be perfect. There's no Goldilocks communication in Lunenburg. It just doesn't exist. One area, just thinking about the year ahead though, that I think we have to be very thoughtful and mindful about is the budget. Because we are not going to have as easy a budget year as we have had in Lunenburg School District over the last two or three years. And in my, my current run of involvement, I, I was inspired to get involved because there, there was a proposed cut that took me by surprise and I just didn't see it coming. It wasn't projected in my opinion. And I felt like everything was a little bit too late to be able to get community engaged and concerned and, and, and get, get the right dialogue going. The point that I'm trying to make here is, is that there's a risk that that history could repeat itself. And so one of the things that we may want to think about is how we are projecting budget discussions for the following fiscal year and how we're soliciting input or at least making the community aware of the potential changes that are going to occur.
So one thing that's different, um, which in the communication survey, um, folks indicated that it was very helpful. We do send the, um, the agendas home when they are posted.
Yep.
So that should go a long way to keeping people updated. I think some of the challenge is that, as you see, we're, we're already starting to think about, we're entering into a budget cycle again. And you know that I have made no secret for the last two plus years that this funding is going away. We know we can't keep all of our staff positions and that we're going to have some very difficult decisions ahead. So people should be hearing that because I've been saying it for more than two years. So stay tuned on all that. I, you know, I, I did ask, um, prior to, um, working on the five-year staffing plan last year, what the committee's priorities would be around staffing? And, uh, the majority responded achievement. So you know, there will be an opportunity for all of you to weigh in and let us know in advance what is your greatest priority? And that will factor in as we work as a leadership team to try to map out a five-year staffing plan. Or as I call it, the identified needs, because we know we're not getting all of these staff positions in a five-year window. That's not what this process is about for us. It's about communication with the community around, we have need that is unmet. So.
I, I think relative to a school committee goal though, and I appreciate everything and I agree with everything you've said in terms of what we're doing to communicate and you and I have been engaged in this topic of what's going to happen in FY 25 for years, literally at this point. The problem is, is that there's 12,000 people in Lunenburg. There's about 200 that pay, pay attention to what's going on in town government.
That's very generous.
Okay, so let's be generous, 200. But when your kid's program is up for a change or elimination or something along those lines, it becomes a very emotional event. And in my experience, the best way to head that off is to make people aware as broadly and as early as possible.
Sounds, sounds like we got a goal.
And it means.
How are you envisioning?
Well, I don't know. I mean, this is why as a committee, we got to figure this out, right? I mean, I don't, I don't have a plan.
That is a good goal.
But I, I think that, you know, we want engagement. We want people ideally to come to our meetings and tell us what they think and we want people to show up at sporting events and all these things. But we have got to be able to project and communicate some of our concerns well enough in advance that they have the ability to think and then reflect back.
That's going to be a big change.
This ties into Anthony's favorite topic too, as far as Turkey Hill and the future of the buildings. It does because we're.
You're right.
That's another issue that concerns the budget that we need engagement on.
All right, so thanks. I will, uh, pass the info on to Carol and we can progress as well, but we had some good discussions. Uh, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, uh, strategy for continuous improvement. This is also a discussion.
So this evening, um, you have a condensed map out of the strategy. When this strategy was first put together and approved in November of 2019, it was the product of all that I learned through the entry process with lots of surveys of staff and students and parents, focus groups, review of documents, review of data, interviews with different town department leaders, et cetera, et cetera. It was a lengthy process. And then you look for the themes that emerge that people are indicating they would like to see some work done. When this strategy was first introduced, there were, as I've been calling them now for five years, four. four big bucket areas. Communication and operations was the most limited of all the bucket areas in terms of scope. Transforming teaching and learning, cultivating climate and culture, and equity access, achievement and opportunity for all students. Looking at the action plans and the progress that had been made, there might have been some small portions of previous action plans that we felt we needed to do some continued work in, but not to the level that it warranted its own separate action plan. We've been talking for the last year about the priority focus around equity in the district, around achievement for students, all students, being challenged and those that need the support. This notion of family engagement or family-school partnership, as the Department of Ed likes to frame it. We know that we need to continue to find ways to make sure that all kids feel a sense of belonging at school, that parents feel a sense of belonging at school. But when you take a step back and you look at all of those big focus areas that we're working on, they really do all fit under the cultivating climate and culture. Because we've been talking about that culture as one that is a culture of caring, inclusion, safety. So I think that some small elements that were remaining in other action plan areas, we could pull out and then fit them under the different action plans for cultivating climate and culture. There were four, and in taking a look at the fourth one, based on the work that we needed to continue there, I thought it was a good fit to merge and drop it out as its own separate action plan, so that now we have three action plans, all under the umbrella of climate and culture. But it encompasses our equity work, our focus on student achievement, and making sure that all students are challenged and supported, continued communication to engage families in their child's education, et cetera. I think it's a progression. We should have been making progress on all that we mapped out all those years ago. With the intent, when I rolled this plan out, and it was approved in November of 2019, I said that much of the work outlined in the plan at that time would take a three-to-five-year period. So it makes sense that at this point, we are able to narrow the framework for the work that remains. But the differentiated instruction is in here, looking at data relative to equity is in here. Work around the focus areas that the family-school partnership district team identified through the process with that DESI program. Last year is in there. Professional development is important in all of these areas for staff, whether that's how to build a strong partnership with families, your students' families. How do you accomplish building that strong connection with the parent or guardian or extended family of that student? Professional development continues around cultural competence. We had a keynote speaker for opening day. It was very well received. Carol Ashambo was able to attend. We will have this same person back to speak to our staff on both full-day PD days this year. We're looking at the possibility of some additional workshop time for our leadership team. And there is an opportunity for some discussion around workshop for a school committee, workshops for parents, and actually even speaking with students. So there's lots of work that's underway there as well. And in part, that cultural competence work will also address what came forward in our equity audit relative to students in our LGBTQ population not feeling connected or recognized or safe in some cases, which also connects us back to the anti-bullying work as well. Again, it all connects back to culture and climate. But they're all the things that we've been talking about that you've identified as areas of concern and areas for continued focus over the last year.
Does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments?
There has been a ton of work done since 2019. This is extensive. Like, I don't, this is a lot. I know.
I know that I had a conversation both with the chair and the vice chair. In all my years in education, in every role I've ever been in, in any district I've ever been in, I have never, never been in a district driving this much work at one time. It's not, it's not common. And we continued to drive all of this work through COVID and all the challenges that came with COVID. We didn't say, "Oh, too much. We got to back off our vision for the work that needs to be done." Because the students were at the heart of the work that needed to be done. So we didn't ease off any of our plans. It was still forward progress the entire time. And it is more work than I have ever seen in any district I've ever been in. But it's all good work. It benefits the kids.
So I know sometimes I compare the, you driving the school system like steering a massive cruise ship. Like, it's not going to turn very easily. That's a lot of turning.
And a lot of wake.
Yeah, a lot of wake. But this is, are these available online?
Yes.
For people, because this is, anyone watching, this is, you might want, you should take a look. A lot has been done.
Refresh my, I've got this printed beside my workstation in my office at home, but refresh my memory in terms of what the timeline is for considering, discussing, and approving this in your expectations.
I really don't have any expectations. I know that we spent several meetings last fall talking about it because it was important that whatever goals you wanted me working on for evaluation purpose should be obviously connected back to the strategy because it has to have a consistent through line. If there's, oh, there's a district improvement plan and a school improvement plan, and we have educator goals for evaluation, and that when it's, when it's not connected with the through line, it can feel very disjointed and very overwhelming for staff and for leaders trying to execute on it. Which is why we have developed the last couple of years, district-wide goals that can be my goals, can be my leadership team's goal, can potentially be adopted by educators here in the district as their own educator evaluation goal. Because that way, we're all working on something that has been deemed important to be working on. And when everybody's working on it, you get more traction. Instead of every man for himself, everybody's got an oar in there going in all different directions.
So you reflected that there's a lot that's been done, and I agree with you entirely. And there's a lot that's now being considered as this proposed update. And I, my initial reaction was the same as yours, which is, that's a lot. And the read-in over the last couple of days and my limited time, like, I feel like I just need to kind of absorb this, reflect on it. I think that there's a need for a little bit of community engagement on this, just to kind of see what, and staff, you know, like, has the staff seen this? Are we looking for comments from the staff? And I totally agree with the through-line strategy. I'm just, like, I'm a little bit worried, like, there's a lot of loose ends that we may lose as we make this transition. And I, I feel like we need to be thoughtful about that too. So anyway, this is my.
Yeah, I'm happy, you know, if you identify something that's a concern for a loose end, it might be in there, but it's phrased in a different way, and I might be able to say, no, it actually is in there. Typically, on opening day, I give the highlights of a strategy. I don't go into all of the action plans with all of the staff this year because we had a keynote come in. I didn't spend a lot of time addressing the staff. But I do typically, you know, put this out and share what I've presented. The leadership team is aware of what was presented for this evening. It is posted for the public, so if, you know, if folks were inclined to weigh in, they certainly could. I can absolutely, as we did last year when they were posted, you know, encourage people to take a look and, you know, offer any feedback or comment relative to what was posted. I consider this still a draft. But even this limited, more focused, smaller number of action plans still has a lot going on in it. So I don't want you to think, "Oh, we're just taking a slow year." There's still a lot of work to do here.
And for the public's benefit, who may not be looking at this, this reflects a strategy update that isn't, and the action plans are predominantly, there's a couple that are carryovers, but it's predominantly a two-year plan. So the action items are basically from now through the next fiscal year.
Right. And then we're going to be in a good spot, I think, again, to do a listening tour.
Yeah.
Right? Like, a handful of years have come by. We've done a lot of work. What are areas of concern for you now? What do you want us to keep? Because that was part of the conversation. What do you want me not to touch? Like, this is sacred. We love this. Don't make any changes to this. Versus, you know, what do you, what do you see as some of the areas that we need to focus some attention on? So I do see that, you know, working on core values brings you back around to a conversation about your mission statement and the vision all over again, which is the heart of this plan. When I first arrived in the district, when I was hired, and actually in the posting for the position, was that they were looking for someone to execute the strategic plan that they had just spent a year or two developing, and they had just completed that whole process and were in year one, I think, when I, when I arrived in the district. So interestingly, there was a lot of connection back from the strategic plan that was developed and what I was hearing in my entry process, which led me to just sort of reframe the goals that were in the strategic plan to the bucket areas and the action plans in the strategy for improvement. Essentially, the strategy for improvement is the district improvement plan. And that's why all of the school improvement plans reference back to different bucket areas in the strategy. You'll see early iterations of the strategy for continuous improvement actually reference the original strategic plan goals and where they align. So we are approaching a time where, you know, a listening tour is around the bend. It's time to revisit and get some input. But we're not quite done the work that we mapped out from the original listening tour.
Is there any other questions or discussion on the strategy for continuous improvement?
I would love it if the school's literacy and STEM nights could stick around. I thought that was.
So we had a conversation around that. Essentially, there was one at Turkey Hill, a literacy night, and a literacy night at the primary school, and a science night at Turkey Hill, and at the, we have a lot of parents that have students in both buildings, and it's the same content leads that are, that are creating all of the activities for that night. So we talked about having a K-5 literacy night. That way, parents don't have to say to one child, "Well, I already went to your brother's literacy night. I am not going to a second literacy night this year."
Or we don't have to go to both.
But, but to make it a combined awesome event.
Those were great. I thought those were fantastic for getting, especially post-COVID, for rebuilding the bonds.
We've been talking about other types of events that would showcase other things, like, when I first arrived in the district pre-COVID, you know, there used to be little kindergarten or first grade plays. But then COVID hit, and that just sort of fell off. It's time to go back and revisit some of those ways that we can invite people and showcase what we do with students in a fun environment. So yes, those will stay, but in a modified, hopefully, a little bit more beneficial way not to overload parents.
And yeah, I also had noticed they were held at a variety of times. One of them was right after school or a little bit after school and somewhere in the evenings. And I thought that was very cognizant of parents who work different hours.
Yep. We try. We do hear, when we do hear feedback, we absolutely reflect on that feedback and find ways to modify and improve to better meet the needs as much as we can.
Peter?
I think when I think about your tenure here, Dr. Burnham, and all of the things that we have experienced and the changes that have occurred under your leadership, I think, you know, curriculum and professional development are probably the two things that come to mind first and foremost. And, you know, as I look at priority two, again, for the benefit of the public, engage educators in reflective practice and utilize resources to ensure a high-quality, interactive, deeper learning experience with appropriate levels of support and challenge for all students. And what you have articulated to me, and please correct me because I'm going to use my own language here, is that, you know, we need to make substantial changes to the curriculum to align with what the state is doing and. and MCAS and expectations. But we also needed to create more and better leaders within our faculty to be able to make that fa, make our faculty more dynamic and more effective in their ability to educate a very diverse set of learning abilities in their classrooms.
Which is why the coaches...
Across a variety of subjects.
The instructional coaches are so critical.
And I, the, the, the list of what's been completed and what's been done is, is obviously pretty extraordinary, as, as has already been discussed. And obviously, you're looking to continue this and carry it forward. Differentiated learning, you know, in the, in the action items appears twice. I'm glad, you know, obviously, I think that that should be a committee goal of ours to look at. I think that that's a really important area for us to, to move the needle on.
And we are participating in DUCY's, I think they're calling it, Inclusive Practice Academy, which is centered around universal design for learning, which is teachers' planning with differentiation in mind. Differentiation of materials, conveyance of new information, differentiation in the ways in which students choose to interact with their learning, the ways in which we assess student learning. All of those things can be differentiated. Our teachers just need coaching and PD to get us there.
I was getting to a question, which is, you know, as you, if you could reflect back to where you were on this, maybe, you've been here five years now, and what your vision was then, you know, relative to now, how far along are we? You know, could, could you, is it a percentage or, you know, like, how much have we moved relative to what you think should be the standard?
In a short time, especially given all that came with COVID, we've made some good progress. We still have a ways to go. What's important to convey for people who, who are listening and aren't in education, stability in leadership and a consistent vision is important if you're going to produce a lasting change that the staff internalize and own. We are seeing them shift the ways that they are approaching instruction. We need to maintain that until it becomes their new norm.
Muscle memory.
Correct. If we were to abandon our coaches at this, pull them all, we don't have them anymore. We don't have these data meetings. We don't have common planning time with leaders present to help guide and keep everybody on track. Then we go back to the days where teachers are going to default to what is comfortable for them and what they know. And they may go back to not largely using the curriculum that we have purchased and adopted district-wide K-5. That's how things devolve over time when there isn't a level of leadership, consistent messaging, support for teachers to make the move, accountability for teachers. No, you, you can't just go do your own thing. We have a district curriculum, right? We're not to the place of muscle memory. But we talk about changing culture, and there have been moments over the last couple of years, last year, the year before, comments from staff, the things that they're asking for. It's like, it, it's happening. Like, they are into this. Like, they're asking for what we've been trying to convey is, you know, good practice. So, the culture is shifting, even for parents looking at, at assessment data. That culture is shifting. We saw that the first year we implemented iReady assessments. Mrs. Champagne sent an email home to all of her families saying that the assessments were completed. And please let her know if you would want a, a print copy of your child's assessment sent home. And she had 20 for the whole school request. And by the benchmark mid-year in January, it was more like 200 reports were being printed and sent home. That is culture shift, right? It, it's, it's a work in progress. Culture is hard to change. It does not change overnight. But I am, I'm really happy to see the changes that are taking hold. When our teachers had the opportunity to go visit in another district that had adopted the same curriculum that we did, they came back and were so happy to have had the chance to go observe colleagues teach and have conversations with them. This notion of peer observation, you know, and as an educator, you know, Brian, you would know, teachers tend to be in their classroom. This is the world I know. I don't know what you're doing in your classroom. I only know what I'm doing in my classroom. Am I a good teacher compared to you? I don't know, because I don't know what you're doing, right? We have no sense of it when we go to our classroom, do our job, and leave. Teachers need to see each other teaching, talking to each other about teaching. That also changes the culture of teaching in general, but it changes the culture and climate in building, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burnham. We're gonna continue on with our agenda. The next item on the agenda is reports. I'll open it up to anyone who has any reports.
The capital planning committee met last week, last Wednesday. And we had a discussion about our goals for the year. I mentioned earlier that the town manager presented an inventory of all-town vehicles, as well as bridges and culverts in town. And it was really great to see it all in one place because in the past, both in my role as a finance committee member and as a, as a capital planning committee member, you see a request for a vehicle, but it's very difficult to put that in the context of the fleet. And, or a culvert, and you don't know the age of the culvert relative to the age of other culverts and bridges and those kinds of things. And our infrastructure is, while we have very good road, roads, the underlying infrastructure is not new in Lunenburg. And so, it was really good to have a view of that. That is required by charter and is not something that has been done regularly in recent memory. And hopefully, that will continue in the future and will really help to guide us as we do both the annual capital prioritization as part of the capital planning process, as well as we had a discussion around our, what we want to achieve this year and our roles and responsibilities as capital planning committee members. And we agreed that we need to come up with some kind of output that relates to the charter's mandate for a comprehensive five-year capital plan. And in, again, in recent memory, that is not something that the capital planning committee has done. So, what we resolved is while we have a lot of work to do between now and the end of December, to make our recommendations for the FY '25 capital plan, while we usually then go on holiday break and never come back, unless there's a substantial change made by the town manager, we're gonna continue our work into the spring and look at the longer-term requests and come up with some kind of rating system or guidance in terms of what is going to, what is likely to see long-term support and what is not, to make for better guidance to departments. We did reorganize. Mr. Alonso was appointed chair. I am vice chair. And Mr. Menard is, who is a new member from the finance committee, is clerk. Also, the athletic advisory committee does not have a meeting scheduled. Our next scheduled meeting isn't until the 18th of November. But I am gonna be surveying members to put together a September, end-of-September meeting, and we'll advise the committee when that meeting is organized.
Thank you. Anyone else? The building design committee met in August. It had been a while since they last met. And the chair had mentioned that the select board had set aside ARPA funding for the engineering design. And as Mr. Beardmore said at the last select board, they did approve the funding, about $225,000. So, the work is gonna progress, work on planning that out, stages for the plan, working on that, and then trying to get a spring town meeting, potentially funding for the, the project. The finance committee met at the end of July. It was a somewhat quick meeting. They do wanna do a reorg. They don't have a clerk currently, but it's also not a full committee. They, they wanted to wait for Tom as well. Their new member is Gene Russell, who was appointed for the subcommittees of the, the DPW and facilities. They didn't have any updates at the time for tax assessments. They were mailing out the checks. The money for the, that they had set aside for the abatements was sufficient. The committee reports, they had, the parks had submitted a grant application for $500,000 a few weeks ago at that time for Marshall Park. They received questions back. Hopefully, it was going to go forward. It was a matching grant, but they had ARPA funds that could match that. And they planned to do phases. The second phase was fields, and the third was access to the lake. They also brought up a, a policy that maybe the select board could work on for the, the concern that come, that had come up with the air conditioning for the primary. The town manager had reported that the bids for the guardrail repair premier fence was $80,000. Mass DOT funding, the state carried over funding. The page-street culvert bids were $86,000 from the capital plan, came in less. The five-year assessing from Vision was starting September 1st for 112K. The full revale required was every five years. The field review and visual driving and roadway maintenance bids were $103,000. Snowplow bids are out, and they were due August 7th. The sewer operation and maintenance due the same week. 925 mass AV, the EPA work and removal of tanks. The drum was removed, and the soil, there's a grant through Mass Development for real estate assistance in the fall. The senior center patio project was progressing for September. The ritter ramp drawings completed and sent to the APDC for review. Both were capital plan projects. The ritter windows are not the original windows. They, the proposed are more like the original. The generator project is being reviewed and then goes out to bid, as well as public safety carpet. Road materials for the DPW will be put out to bid soon. The TCP building school is no longer using SchoolDude, but now MyRac. New phone systems, transitions in town buildings in the next couple of months. New website would be live around September. Civics Plus, it would be the same address, though. And migration of data is complete now, test training for munis. And the total abatements, we're gonna be done in the next couple of weeks, back in July. It was 1.317 million and $14,000 in interest. And the question was when it was gonna be released. There was 1.5 million in overlay, so about 200,000 for a normal cycle. And that was it. Lot of information.
Wow.
Any other reports? All right, moving on. The agenda was public comments. So, any public comment from the committee?
First home football game Friday night, 7:00 PM, Frontier Regional. And the school is planning a white-out thing. They're selling T-shirts, and the team and the student body will be in white, I'm, I guess, from that communication. So, be there or be square.
Any other public comment from the committee? Any public comment from the public? Raise your hand on Zoom. Or you can unmute. Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is topics for future discussion. I'll open it up to the committee.
I think we should talk about Turkey Hill.
I'll, I'll let Carol know.
Sisyphus will be joining the committee at that point.
They will make a subcommittee for Turkey Hill. Any other topics for future discussion? I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:38 PM.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.